Call the Springfield City Council session.
Mayor A. Gordon, your counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Will.
Here.
Counselor Rodney.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Delo.
Here.
And that's our staff.
Here, thank you.
All right, we got two ends. Safety special operating love you for it all. With me down. All right, uh, do you mean mayor and council? So tonight I'm here looking for guidance. Okay, I'll be great for the fire safety. Pretty loving that'll be on. Remember. Back to. The life first point five six. Join us tonight is Jack Corino. Of D H M Research, uh, shared salt survey they adopted. Yeah. April of this year. Pouring it over to them on one of the background information. So it's going. This loving bird's path in two thousand and two at three six cents per thousand then and it funded full cost. Uh, we did it again. And we said thousands of fun. I'm over in two thousand and fifteen into circumstances say described. At it. Uh, the council shows a lower than three thirty six cents per thou. Twenty twenty, uh, it was bringing roughly sixty five seven cent. Awesome. Uh, in twenty twenty, uh, also asked for a rate at in that balance. That's thirty cents per thousand. So running through all of this process and. On it. Was the mayor's fiscal to the. That began me. A big January and, uh, what became clear for the first, uh, convenience. Of course, was that. There was a consensus that they like the levy who. We. Perfectly got. But her family. Uh, that successfully renewed every year since two thousand. Uh, and that the levy should be paid for the full cost of. Services that. Uh, because, uh, the work of the. We didn't fire to us. Uh, we went forward with that comparability. When we want to play. That being down. Uh, test that rate, uh, with our. We also tested their alternative. A forty six percent, forty six. And I'm gonna let them share. Uh. Going forward, I scheduled a work session and regular session at sixteen. If coming out of this meeting tonight, I have guidance, uh, rate. Up and back in regular session on June sixteen with. Session. If, uh, after the scene, we would like more information, uh, we'll be back at work session June sixteen. Bringing back about I don't. We should. On June thirtieth and special session. For. And tonight we have enough time for the survey presentation and question of the survey as well as the discussion. I did. Right turn it over any question? I think we're ready for it to be turned over. Right, uh, Tony.
Okay, thank you. One second here. Okay, can you all see the? The survey on the screen?
We cannot.
Okay, let me give, let me try that one more time. Okay, how's that?
We can see it.
Okay.
And you can see, uh, sorry. Oh. All right. Well, it looks like we're still, uh, dealing with the camera, so you are on, you can hear it. Moving area. And.
Terrific, and I will admit that. My audio is. I'm not hearing you extremely well, I'm probably hearing about eighty percent of what you're saying. And I'm hoping that you can hear one hundred percent of what I'm saying, can I? Can I just get an affirmation from somebody that? You can hear me well.
Can hear you clearly. Yes.
Fantastic. So, um, thank you, uh, for. Allowing, uh, Anna and I to be here today, my name is Tony Ocarrino. I'm a senior research manager at D H M Research. I'm joined by Anna Feldman, uh, research associate at D H M. D H M is a policy oriented public opinion research firm based in Portland. Uh, we've been doing this kind of work for forty plus years in the Pacific Northwest. The last time I had the honor of presenting to Springfield City Council was in two thousand and twenty two. When we shared the results of our. Uh, research on a potential police levy. We're fortunate to have this opportunity again, uh, and we're eager to share our results. So the purpose of the survey was to assess a general mood. Of voters in Springfield and identify the key issues that they're thinking about. Uh, gauge support for a potential fire levy in November, two thousand and twenty five. Uh, understand why voters might support or oppose the levy. And finally. And if we have time, we can go into this. Uh, identify some of the more trusted sources when it comes to opinions about the levy. Now, in order to do this, we connected with three hundred Springfield voters. Via a hybrid or mixed mode survey in which half of respondents received. A phone call and spoke with a live interviewer. And the other half, uh, received a text asking them to participate in a survey online. Whether people participated via a live interviewer or an online survey, the questions were entirely identical. The survey was conducted in early to mid April. And, uh, this was a representative survey. So a representative sample, so in order to ensure that we set quotas. Uh, in other words, a certain percentage of voters. Uh, needed to be of a certain gender, age, political affiliation and ward. Um, we also weighted the data by race and ethnicity, education level, homeownership. So we have a representative sample of. Now, this is something I'm gonna explain a little more in detail later. But this is, this was a representative sample of likely November, two thousand and twenty five voters. That's a little bit different than Springfield voters as a whole, but I'll get into that, uh, in a sec. Uh, the margin of error for this survey with a sample size of three hundred is plus or minus five point seven percent. Now, this is a breakdown of our sample of who we spoke with. Um, again, something to emphasize here. Uh, this was not a representative sample of all Springfield voters. But of likely November, two thousand and twenty five voters now, November, two thousand and twenty five, as you know, would be a special election. And based on our understanding of past data and voter turnout. Um, we know that special elections are a little different. Uh. The special elections tend to be more partisan. So there's fewer non affiliated voters. Uh, special elections tend to be more, uh, have more older voters. Um, so a lot fewer younger voters were in this sample. And because they're older, they're more likely to be homeowners, uh, so far fewer renters. Than owners compared to the sort of actual adult voting population. But what you see here is an accurate representation. Uh, of, of the likely. Uh, cohort of voters in November, two thousand and twenty five. So, um, D H M following Gallup, uh, which pioneered this. Uh, has been asking a similar question for nearly twenty years. And it goes like this. All things considered. Would you say that? Um. X, in this case, the city of Springfield, um, is headed in the right direction? Or are things off on the wrong track? And this allows us to track trends over time. Uh, and to make comparisons in other cities as well. Uh, as you can see. Uh, since we last conducted the survey in two thousand and twenty two, the outlook is a bit more optimistic. Uh, with fifty eight percent of the sample, uh, saying the city is headed in the right direction. Now, how does this compare with what we've seen in other communities? Uh, we've been seeing an upward trend in positivity in cities across Oregon. Um. Uh, so this trend kind of matches that overall trend we're seeing in the Pacific Northwest. But also. Um, comparatively speaking, you're doing pretty well. Um. In the last few months, we've done polls in Portland, in Sandy, in Albany. Uh, only twenty three percent of voters think, uh, Portland is heading in the right direction. Uh, forty nine percent of Sandy voters. And in nearby Albany, only thirty three percent say the city is headed in the right direction. Why does all this matter? Positivity about the direction of the city. Often correlates with support for ballot measure referrals. That city leaders are presenting to voters. Uh, so. And for example, for this particular survey that we conducted. Voters with a positive outlook are far more likely to support rather than oppose the levy. So voters who think the city is heading in the right direction, sixty four percent of them. Um, support the levy, which is higher than the average. Now, we asked about how satisfied or dissatisfied voters were with various city services. Um. And as you can see. Uh, although satisfaction has declined slightly, uh, by about three points. For, um, fire and rescue services between two thousand and twenty two and two thousand and twenty five. Um, satisfaction is still pretty high, I mean, it doesn't get much higher than nine and ten. Um, and satisfaction with fire and rescue services is higher. Uh, than for any other service that we tested, whether it's police, library or street maintenance. And we'll notice, um, satisfaction levels with city street maintenance. Perhaps something you're already aware of, um, is down considerably in the last three years. So that's certainly something on voters' minds. I'm gonna stop here. Um. Because I just don't want, I don't want to just throw a ton of information at you. Um. Are there any questions so far? Before we.
A question, um, but I will put up that council, I do have a comment. I read the city street maintenance number and the decline, my. My, uh. Hypothesis there was that last year we passed the street bond and then no one. Those projects are out there yet. So we surveyed, but it's like to pass a street bond. And they may haven't seen the products built yet, they're in the pipeline and being designed. Does anybody have any questions about this, Lynn? But.
Um, is it difficult to sort of? Separate homeowners versus their renters and such, because it seems like this is. Uh, an issue that's going to obviously affect property owners more than others, even though those other folks vote. Um. I just think that it would weigh a little heavier on that, and also the number three hundred seems like. Kind of a small number when you consider twelve or fifteen thousand people might be voting in a special election. So is there a particular reason that it was three hundred or that you chose three hundred?
Yeah, let me, let me get to the three hundred first, um. Part of it is cost. And part of it, part of it is availability of, of, you know, how? It's how many people you can actually reach with your population size in a random sample survey. So if we had an endless amount of time. And we did a lot of marketing and you did opt in surveys and you encourage people to vote, I mean, to participate. You could get more than three hundred. Um, but it's hard to get m- more than three hundred in a population your size. Doing a kind of scientific random sample. Survey. Um. Without spending a lot. Um, and then your second question has to do with. Uh, second part of the question seemed to have to do was, are there? You know, are, is there? Is there any demographic data suggesting sort of different demographic subgroups having different levels of satisfaction? Um. We can certainly do that analysis, um, we don't have that. Like on hand right now to share.
Um, I wasn't asking about satisfaction, I was asking about targeting. Property owners versus renters.
Oh, I see. Well, yes, so.
Reality is that the property owners are the ones that are gonna pay for this, not the renters, even though renters. Property owners would pay for it.
So. Uh, according to our data, about fifty five percent. Of your community are homeowners. Now, of the folks we spoke with. About seventy five percent were homeowners. And that's because we were talking to likely voters. Um, again, who are older. More likely to be homeowners, uh, a higher level of education as well. So. Um. The. The results that we're sharing are very much representative of the. Likely turnout. In November, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay.
I don't see any more questions if you wanna keep going.
Okay. So now let's get into the levy test itself. Uh, typically, when we do ballot measure tests like this, we like to begin with what's called a cold test or an initial test. In doing so, we offer no information whatsoever about the levy except the ballot title. Uh, which is often very legalistic sounding. And, and we do this because for some voters, that's all they'll see. That's all they'll pay attention to is a ballot title. And so when we provide this ballot title. Again, using the kind of legalistic language that is, that is often required. Um, you've got about four in ten support, so forty two percent of likely voters support the levy. Um, but as you can see. After providing, uh, just a minimal, um, uh, amount of additional information. Basically, the kind of information you might find on a ballot summary. Uh, including the fact that this is increase over the past levy. That the increase is necessary to keep up with fifteen years of inflation and to help maintain services. And finally. You know, that. The co- that would probably, it would likely cost the average household about a hundred dollars a year for five years. You see what happens? Um, voter support increases by fourteen points to fifty six percent. Now, with that basic information, you'll see that support for the levy increases among all groups. Uh, all key groups regardless of income, of age, of party and of ward. All right, so what are the main reasons voters support, uh? And oppose the levy? We provided voters with a set of potential reasons to support the levy. The language on the left is real in, in bold is just shorthand language for us for analytical purposes. Uh, voters did not see that. What voters saw is the, the more elaborate, uh, reasons, uh, on the right. And they go from the fact that. Funds would, uh, even though Springfield and Eugene share the same fire department, the funds would go for, to go to Springfield only. Um, the fact that the levy would provide equal services for all residents, ensuring that all five stations stay open. And that all neighborhoods, you know, enjoy equal access. That would provide protection against wildfires, that it's necessary to keep up with inflation, that the cost. Um, of about an average of a hundred dollars per household per year is a reasonable amount. And that it would be a way to avoid service cuts. So these are the reasons that we presented to see how they fared. And you'll find that all reasons, uh, to support the levy. Uh, were found to be compelling by voters. And but there's three that really stand out, those top three. Not simply because of the high percentage of those who overall thought them. Considered them to be very good or somewhat good reasons to support the levy. But also, uh, the percentage of those who especially found them to be very good reasons to support the levy. Uh, that's that darker teal color in those top, top three rows. So the fact that it sort of. Um, reassuring voters that the funds would be for Springfield only. Uh, reassuring voters that. Uh, it would mean all fire stations remain open at all times, providing equal services for all neighborhoods. And then it would provide protection against wildfires, all of these deeply, deeply resonate, um, with voters. The other arguments do or reasons do as well, they just. Uh, not as much as the top. Now, we also presented a number of reasons why people might oppose the levy. Um. Everything from, you know, this is bad timing, given recent inflation and how high housing costs. Um, that. You know. That we should be opposed to any property tax increase whatsoever, they're already too high. Um, that renewal at the current rate. Uh, is, is fine, though we don't need an increase. Um, that. Voters might not trust the city of Springfield to manage its property tax revenues wisely. And also finally, that a reduction in those services and is an acceptable trade off. If it means paying less in taxes. Um. Now, before discussing the top reasons to oppose, just a little context or just a little reminder. Uh. All, almost all of the reasons to support the measure significantly outperform reasons to oppose. So quickly, just going back. You'll see that they range from fifty seven percent convincing to eighty percent convincing. And then you go over here to the reasons to oppose. And you're at eighteen percent convincing to fifty eight percent convincing. With those top two reasons. You know, it's just bad timing, giving the high inflation and high housing costs. And, um. That we're just opposed to any property tax increase, tax, property tax already too high. You know, with those being the most compelling reasons to oppose. So what impact did hearing all of these reasons, both pro and con? Have on overall support for the levy? So in this final test, you'll see that. Um, overall support. You know, stayed. Flat at fifty six percent after hearing those, um, messages pro and con. But what we do notice is that certainty of support. And that's that dark blue, um. Stack on the second column there increases about five points to thirty six percent. So what does all this mean? I mean, our rule of thumb at D H M, when we do this kind of research and we provide some consulting to our clients. Is to say that typically, when doing a preliminary test like this. Ideally, you wanna be somewhere around sixty percent support. When you're thinking about referring something to the ballot, because it's always easier to move people to. No than it is to yes. And so having that. Having something north of fifty percent is desirable. Because it serves as kind of a hedge against some potential erosion in support. Now, you are just south of sixty percent. Um. So keep that in mind. The second thing that we often point out is that when thinking about your support numbers. You want about half of your support to be certain. Um. And in this case. Um. At thirty six percent, you're well north of more than fifty percent. Um, more. More than half of those, far more than half of those who support the measure are certain of their support. So, uh. One might argue, taking that information together is that council ought to be cautiously optimistic. Um, that referring this ballot, um, to voters, uh, would result. Again, with some caveats, um, because this is months from now, not in April. Um, in support or passage for the measure. Now. Finally, I'll say that we do know that there's been some discussion about the appropriate levy rate. So we asked voters about that and we asked them, would you prefer? A fifty three cent rate to maintain services? Which is what we've been testing. Or a forty six percent rate with some decreased services? Or none of the above? Offered that choice between the proposed levy at fifty three percents. A reduced cost levy with decreased services at forty six cents. Um, or no levy at all, you'll see that a plurality or fifty percent choose the proposed levy. Um. About a third of voters are just opposed to any. Uh. Any levy increase at all. Um. But another way of reading this as well is that. Fifty percent plus fourteen percent, you've got sixty four percent of voters who support some sort of increase. Um, as opposed to no levy. And. Um. Now. We can go into more detail, uh, about. Other things, but. Um. And there is a full report. Uh, with more details than what we've provided here in our presentation. But we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thirty questions. Um, I do have one question and I see you sitting at the back. I'm gonna ask it slowly so you can walk.
Thank you.
So. When I read the data, um, there was a big data swing in war three and war four. You, since you managed to remember all the fire stations, if we think about this supporting a specific station, where is that station? The specific stations in twenty eighth and Centennial Station three. So essentially right in the middle of those two boards. Okay.
Um. So when we talk about this levy, is it covering any of the? Within the U G B but outside the city limits like Hayden Bridge and that sort of thing, is that also covered? Within what this levy dollars are going towards?
Some of those contract districts have their own levies and specifically Rainbow Water District, which I think is the. And I can add, I take when setting the budgets, we take the full cost, including the fat fifth station.
And I can add, I take when setting the budgets, we take the full cost, including the fat fifth station and charging that out.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, question me. Right, uh, a question for you. I know this is, uh, there's so many numbers going around and this, there's so many parallel conversations to this. Results of the mayor's task force, was there a comment about which direction from that task force the fire line should be looking towards? And I'm just trying to understand, I can't remember exactly, was it which particular, a particular number that the task force had settled on?
So we uh had already done our preliminary calculations that we thought it'd be around fifty three cents per thousand. And uh the task force had a consensus of recommending that we do a whole levy rate. I think that probably one easier.
This is about the options, option two at the thirty cents per thousand and option three is forty six uh cents per thousand. Do those both weigh to a reduction?
That's where it gets a little more complicated. Uh, you know, I think my you say no, we have this uh general plan. Years, it's gonna get more challenging to maintain the current services. So without some additional funding, we are gonna get choices. Anybody else?
So Nate, the ideal uh direction for us tonight is we've got a work session coming up. If we kind of give you guidance on our rate, that would make that next work session a little bit smoother.
Uh, if I have uh consensus and strong guidance and a rate, we'll cancel that procession. And it is fair to say you want more time to if you have a sense of where the rates are. And actually, I have one more question for Tony. Tony, did I read the data right? The way we should be talking and thinking about this is that if we went with a higher rate, it would pass, but we probably need to have some sort of like outreach campaign that's not gonna necessarily pass on itself. Um, maybe I'm an audio. Can you hear me, Tony?
Yo, yes. Um, I heard some of it. Um, I, is it fair to say that? You were suggesting that to increase the likelihood of passage, uh, some campaign would probably be necessary.
Yeah, that that was my reading of it was that do it the way you surveyed. And definitely have to have a public outreach campaign that is paired with this.
So again, what we typically say is, you know, ideally you want about sixty percent support. If you're gonna refer something to the ballot, you're at fifty six. Um, so you're, you're pretty close to sixty, but you're not quite there. It's easier to get people to know than it is to yes. There's often a little bit of erosion uh as you get closer to the election and people are concerned a little bit about their pocketbooks. So to the extent that the, let's say the political and civic leadership is united. And there is an active campaign as well to supplement that unity. Uh, that will go a long way to up towards help uh ensuring like, you know, we can't make promises as a pollster, but significantly increasing the likelihood of passage. And we als- we also have some data as to who voters trust the most. Um, who they want to hear from um the most on this particular measure. And uh the Springfield Fire Chief, uh residents who've received fire benefited from fire rescue and emergency medical services. You know, those, those are two uh individuals or bodies um that, that voters really want to hear from when it comes to this particular measure.
Thanks, Tony. So if we, if people are comfortable um on providing guidance on their rate, that would probably be helpful at this point, or are we gonna take it over to a recession? Reading it and kind of where the discussion is, I'd be bringing forty three cents, but I think there's a little over discussion there.
Under normal circumstances, I'd probably push only those keeping the thirty eight cent rate. However, because of the structural imbalance and because of the work of the task force, I am comfortable pushing the fifty three cents. But that is my own uh position here, but that's just what I'm thinking now.
Did we have a consult um do the same type of work when we were going out for the road on? We didn't, did we?
I wasn't involved in that. Uh, Jeff and I were here, he's not his head desk.
And I can read it with this team consultant.
So do we have similar numbers with that one? Cause I mean, we doubled that and it was resoundingly. I, I'm just curious about historically, like people in Springfield seem to be very supportive of the services like fire and
I can say in twenty twenty two for police, uh, the survey attested at fifty percent support. You know, uh, was formed and it passed at sixty five.
I'm seeing more head nods. All right, I think you got your direction. Okay, so I'm gonna cancel the work session and I'm gonna bring back for adoption, uh, session on June sixteen. Thank you, thank you. And she could seem the most trusted in Springfield. All right, thanks, D H M.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, tonight we're here to uh discuss the Housing and Design Initiative Code and Plan Update. It's the code audit review tonight and appointment of the Governance Committee. Um, you'll hear from me briefly to introduce the project and then I have um our consultant Cascadia Partners who will take over kind of midway through and and really dive into depths about the project. And Allison is promoting to just one thing. And actually, I'll just, I'll give a little bit of background while she's doing that. Um, so last time I came to you uh was in March. Uh, that was just to introduce the project. At that time, it was called the Housing Related Code and Plan Update. It's been rebranded to the Housing and Design Initiative, just because we wanted to be a little bit more clear about what this project was about. So tonight, like I said, we'll go into the audit. It's a twenty to twenty five minute presentation. Um, there's quite a bit of depth about what are the required actions versus strategic recommendations that Cascadia Partners will present on. And then we'll have times for a little bit of discussion and and hopefully the appointment of the Governance Committee. Okay, so I just kind of went into that, the project background and goals. The second part will be the required actions to Iowa State's housing laws. That's legal compliance audit and then clear and objective standards. The third part of tonight's presentation will be about the strategic recommendations, the support house. This, these are not quite required, but again, we're, we're trying to increase um production affordability and choice for housing. We'll look at the neighborhood refinement plans and again, those um housing production barriers and we'll go into next steps in time one. So again, the project background and goals, um, the main part of the project is the statutory compliance review. That is compliance with housing related statutes and state rules. Again, you're seeing the little arrow pointing to it. Those are the legally required um things that we have to do. And then the second part is the strategic recommendations, uh streamlining regulations to housing production, affordability and choice. Again, we're gonna be looking at neighborhood refinement plans and concepts to remove barriers to housing and commercial uh and mixed use. And real quick about the community engagement, um, we took a community engagement plan to a planning commission. They approved that in March. Um, as well as a technical advisory committee last week. Um, so throughout the rest, the remainder of the project, there will be uh the advisory committee, the governance committee, who we will hopefully appoint two people tonight from the city council to sit on that governance committee. That's on an out of talk basis. They'll meet over the summer. And then again, when we finally get to the adoption phase, we'll be seeing those planning. So how does this align with the climate friendly areas? The climate friendly area project focused on uh mainly three areas, Glenwood, Riverfront, downtown and Willhaw. Um, but in contrast, this project is uh again focused on those areas that are outside of the climate friendly areas. But again, we're, we're working to meet those state requirements to support broader housing capability goals um related but separate in the mixed use areas that are outside. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Cascadian Partners and hopefully we'll then find my technical.
Thank you, Haley, and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rachel Cotton. I'm a senior associate with Cascadia Partners and part of the consultant team working with the city um on this housing and design initiative project. I'm also joined tonight by my colleague, Jamon Kimmel, who is the principal in charge um on this project. So a little bit about um the code audit that we did in your packets, you received a memo that summarized the results of this code audit, but as Haley mentioned, I think an important thing to keep in mind is um, there is a required actions piece of our work and then sort of a strategic recommendations piece of our work. So I'm gonna start with the required actions. We did an audit of the code to look at legal compliance. There are a number of housing related state statutes that essentially say um cities' codes either must contain these things or can't contain these things, simply put. And so we did an assessment of um how Springfield's code kind of aligns with those requirements. For the most part, the majority of the code um is compliant. So we've offered here in this table a summary of what all the statutory requirements are and then the findings. In this case, these are all the um requirements that the code is in compliance with. There are a few where um it's not required to have these things in your code, so we flagged those as well. And on to the next slide. So there are a few areas um that we determined are partially compliant. Those are related to residential homes and facilities, manufactured home parks. And then separately, we did an assessment for clear and objective standards for needed housing. So what this means is the code um likely needs some minor amendments to come into compliance with, with the statutory requirements. Um, we've detailed here allowing residential homes um in districts where single dwelling units are allowed is, is one of these requirements, um clarifying some allowances for residential care facilities. Allowing prefabricated dwellings and manufactured home parks. And um ensuring no minimum lot size greater than one acre for manufactured home parks. Um, we're working with staff on these amendments that are required as part of these um statutory kind of compliance piece of the work. Um, so we'll be um doing that as part of this project. But as mentioned, these are the things that are kind of the must dos. Um, and separately, and I'll get into a little bit later in the presentation, we did an audit for clear and objective standards. So I'll explain what that means and then I'll also explain what our findings were. Next slide, please. We also found one specific statute that the code was not in compliance with. So there are um state requirements to allow uh R Vs to be used um for residential occupancy if they're connected to water, electricity and sewer. And so in this case, um, the code is out of compliance in this area. That, that is in the case if they're within RV parks. And then also um to be used without utilities following a natural disaster, um, which is considered a temporary use. And there are some stuff, some timelines uh outlined in statute that um will just need to be adjusted to come into compliance with this requirement. Next slide. And then there are a number of areas where as mentioned, it, it's not that these things need to be in the code, but um sometimes it is helpful. And so we've recommended, um, in this case, if there is a newly adopted development standard or standards, essentially that the code has changed after someone has submitted an application. They are allowed to opt in to the new standards if they choose to do so. And um our recommendation is to include that in the code, just so it's clear to an applicant that they have that option. Next slide. And so in addition to these statutory requirements, there's also a requirement that there is a clear and objective pathway for housing development. And so what we mean when we say clear and objective is that um, if two different people are looking at the code, they are able to come to the same conclusion. They're able to interpret it in the same way. So those are things that are clear and measurable and they will produce the same outcome, even if different people are reviewing an application as an example, there's no discretion involved. And so the state requires that there is a clear and objective pathway for housing. And we did an audit just to see if there are code sections that don't meet those requirements. And the standards that we reviewed are design and development standards, overlay districts, um and then land use application approval criteria, including partitions, subdivisions and site review. Um, and also want to clarify, there must be a clear and objective pathway, but also there can be an alternative pathway that's discretionary. So as long as there is, you know, a clear path saying you must do this list of um, you know, measurable, interpretable uh by the same um measures, things, then there can also be a discretionary pathway. Next slide. And so what we found, um, the city has done a lot of work on its code. And there are many recently amended sections of the development code that meet these state requirements for clear and objective housing standards. Overall, the mixed use districts um need refinement. That was our finding. So Glenwood Riverfront um is one example, and then other mixed use districts um have what we call discretionary language and will need amendments to offer that clear and objective pathway. Um, some of the overlay districts, so including Willamette Greenway, Flood Plain um and Hillside contain uh what is considered vague or subjective language. Um, and we're just flagging that in those cases, these, these areas may require additional technical studies or policy guidance to determine the best way to replace or modify those existing regulations. Um, and this presentation, as mentioned, is meant as a kind of companion kind of high level overview to that memorandum included in your packet. So um that's really the best source of this information. Next slide. Um, and so we looked chapter by chapter um for, for anything that relates to housing development. And we looked, um, we found in chapter four, there were certain phrases, um, included. Included here are some examples, so things like to the maximum extent practicable. Substantial adverse impact, things like that are not considered to be clear and objective. And so we flagged a number of sections that would not be in compliance with this um requirement. And then also just noting that um we interpreted clear and objective to uh apply to standards for public facilities. Some additional examples are just using words like adequate, minimum, necessary or safe and efficient without measurable um criteria is, is not considered to be clear and objective. And again, these are just examples. But it makes it difficult, if you think about the intent of these rules, it's really to provide certainty for applicants um to know what they need to be doing in order to get approved applications. Next slide. In addition, we looked in chapter five and found some unclear submittal requirements. So sections requiring application materials using open ended phrasing, like where applicable as needed may include. And again, these are not clear and objective. So it's it's again, the intent is to provide certainty to applicants. And then lacking some objective metrics for physical features. So, you know, again, other examples, significant clusters of trees or transportation issues are considered vague without any defined thresholds or criteria. Next slide. So this is where we transition to the strategic recommendations piece of our work. And again, just to summarize those first two pieces of the code audit, that is the legal compliance review, clear and objective review. Those are where we've identified and will continue to work with staff on needed amendments to be legally compliant. So to avoid legal challenges. These next sections of work are part of the strategic recommendations. So when we look at the kind of framework for this project that Haley initially mentioned, we're looking to increase options for housing availability, affordability and choice. And so and we're really looking kind of to make some strategic recommendations related to those things. So we reviewed the refinement plans and identified some potential barriers to housing production. Next slide. And some key themes emerged. I just want to emphasize that the plans themselves are guiding documents and the code is where, you know, the criteria for development come into play. So the plans are more kind of higher level and not intended to guide development directly. They're just sort of setting kind of the vision and the overall kind of priorities. So just want to make that clear. But some of the key themes that we found in reviewing the plans are with the lens of barriers to housing development, some requirements for large minimum development areas. So very large parcel sizes. Examples, 10 acres for new residential development. And these large size requirements may discourage infill or small scale housing. We also found that multiple plans require additional planning requirements. So things like development area plans or master plans before residential development can occur. And those kinds of requirements add complexity, delay and cost potentially, particularly for smaller sites and for small level developers. So not, you know, think more of like a mom and pop rather than kind of a larger developer who does larger scale projects. Next slide. There are also policies that favor down zoning or commercial zoning. In some cases, plans recommended rezoning residential land to office or commercial uses or applying exclusively commercial zoning. And again, we're thinking about the lens of this work is to assess barriers to housing. So these sorts of recommendations could potentially reduce the supply of land available for housing. We also found in some cases unclear or potentially restrictive language. So some policies encourage setbacks or buffers beyond what is already required by the code. And just to reiterate, these are not enforceable as development standards, but they could conflict with the city's housing production goals if interpreted too rigidly. And so we just kind of wanted to call them out as part of this work. How do we maintain consistency between the plans and the code? And also the desired goals to increase those housing choices, affordability and availability. Next slide. So in addition to the plans, we looked kind of widely at the commercial and mixed use districts to see how restrictive they were in terms of allowing a variety of housing types that align with market demand, but yet experience regulatory barriers in the code. So here you can see a number of residential development types. Everything, if I'm going from the right side of the slide, from a compact neighborhood development. So we might think of this as the middle housing types, main street neighborhood, modern apartment, main street mixed use, and then kind of the highest density example, I think, is the corridor mixed use development. And this connects to work that was done earlier related to a market study for the climate friendly areas project. And so really just wanting to kind of be consistent as we think about the types of higher density housing that the market is potentially able to provide within Springfield. What do the regulatory barriers in the code mean for the ability to produce that housing within what the market might allow? So that's kind of the framework that we were using for this. Next slide. Oh, yes. It's I'll just say along with Tony in the last presentation, it's hard to hear. So I will do my best, but if I don't totally understand you, I may try to repeat the question.
Okay. So when you did the climate friendly market analysis, were these the type of housing products that were evaluated in the marketing analysis for the C VAC areas?
Yes.
So if I can please correct me if I'm wrong. If I remember the market analysis correctly, they were, the market analysis was saying that the thing that's above about like seven stories isn't going to just don't have the market stability for that. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. So you don't see that type of housing as part of this.
So could you help me? When I read your memo and went through these marketing studies, some of these were at that higher density level. And at those heights, I'm trying to reconcile these two those two presentations. Some of these are at those higher levels according to your memo.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand when you're saying the memo, you're meaning the the actual memo, not the market study attachment. So not, I think it's appendix D. Just to make sure I'm understanding when you say the memo, that's kind of the first clarification.
Oh, we, when I'm referring to market study, thinking about this C VAC presentation that we had from your group, I mean, maybe six months ago.
Yes.
Okay, because in the in the attachments, it says those I was talking about those higher sites. So I'm trying to reconcile these two things in my head because the market study for C VAC said we would never see these hierarchies.
Right, and those, I don't know what you are seeing, but the this slide is meant to represent not those higher heights. So none of, you know, the, I think it's a it's a six story building is the highest one and we're not going above that. And I apologize, I didn't do the the part of the market study part of the work. So I'm doing my best to track everything. But if we have questions that we can't answer tonight, we're happy to refer those to other staff who did that work directly.
That that's okay. I'm remembering something that was six months ago, so I could just be remembering. An attachment one page 12 of 18. It said oral mixed use types and it's got it listed as six to seven stories. And then it has got that that higher density level. And it's 120, 175 units per acre, which doesn't exist in the city of Springfield. I'm mainly asking about that mixed use type that's supported in the market data that you showed us the last time. I guess the modern apartment's got that same density level. I don't think those exist in the city at all.
Rachel, I think I can see if I can clarify. Yeah, so the the key difference there in terms of the cost of development, it really steps up when you go from a what would be considered usually a podium construction building. So that would be a wood frame, four to five, four to six stories or four to five stories, excuse me, of wood frame on a concrete podium. So that sort of construction type maxes out at about seven stories. If you build anything higher than seven stories, then you're then needing to build that in a steel frame building, which is significantly more expensive. And so that's where that market study found that the rents currently in Springfield do not support construction of those steel frame buildings that are taller than seven stories. So it is possible to build up to seven stories with a podium building. That's that's mostly wood frame construction, which is significantly less expensive. So that's really where the cost impact comes in. In terms of the density and units per acre, you can build at a relatively high density with only four, five or six stories tall. And that's what some of these prototypes here are showing. So there's maybe a relatively high density compared to what is built in the city today. Those could pencil if the if the code was allowing for that level of density to be built. And many other market factors about how parking is provided on the site, if parking is provided. So I'd say the density is not a good number to use on to base as a barometer of the cost of development. It's really the height, where the height, the construction costs rise the most. So I guess what you're seeing here is a set of prototypes that are relatively high density and units per acre, but none of them exceed that seven stories in height. Does that clarify?
It helps and I don't, and I can take my answer off the air because I think like in my head, I should think all presentations is internally consistent. Is that correct?
Sorry, it was a little bit hard to hear that again.
Presentations, the market study we have for C VAC and what you're showing us today should be internally consistent. Is that correct?
Yes, that was our intent. If there's something that is inconsistent about it, I we would like to know that, but I believe the consistency here is really that you're looking at is relatively high density housing, but not tall buildings. I mean, I'm going into towers necessarily, but it's a high density within that envelope of at the most up to six to seven stories.
You go back and double check because I vaguely remember that like lot size became was a big factor in that other presentation. And again, we don't have to get into it now. I just like somebody to double check so we keep the keep the conversation as consistent as possible and we can keep going from here.
Okay, yes, and appreciate you pointing that out because as Jamin mentioned, our goal is to be consistent with that work to kind of build off the findings of that market analysis. So I choose to think of this spectrum, right? The corridor mixed use is kind of the highest in terms of the height, not necessarily the density like Jamin clarified. Kind of the highest possible kind of development prototype that we would we would think of and we're probably pushing what's possible today. We're pushing against that a little bit as an assumption, you know, we're future thinking in some of this work. So we're really wanting to not restrict things to what the market is today, but also be realistic within those assumptions, if that's helpful. But we'll certainly double check that we are being consistent because that's what we're going for. Next slide. And so in terms of what we did for this piece of the analysis, we looked at different commercial and mixed use districts and then their supportiveness for the different types of development. In some cases, there were certain districts here highlighted in green that were the regulations and the development standards were generally supportive of these building types. Yellow being mostly supportive and then red being not supportive, meaning there are significant barriers in use regulations and development standards that make it difficult to support these building types. Next slide. And so in terms of a little bit more detail on the findings, kind of how do we turn that chart into meaningful information? Some of the barriers include prohibition on standalone residential. So many districts require commercial uses to be part of a housing development, including mandates for commercial dominance or restricting residential uses to upper stories. These requirements can raise costs and complexity, particularly if there's low market demand for commercial space. So in in this case, commercial districts listed here have these type of requirements. Additionally, some districts, we recognize the intent is primarily for commercial uses. So allowing standalone housing may be inconsistent with the intent of that district. And additionally, allowing standalone residential may reduce the city's needed supply of land for commercial development. So we just want a caveat that additional analysis may be needed to remove barriers to housing, but also ensure that there's a sufficient land supply available for commercial and employment uses. So we will be doing additional analysis as part of this work, just kind of assessing the adequacy. You know, kind of what do some of these potential changes, what might they mean for that kind of supply of commercial and employment land? And then finally, fi- findings were that in certain districts, height and lot coverage restrict requirements, restrict feasibility of multi-story or compact development. And so modifying those standards could make housing more feasible to build. Next slide. And then back to the market piece. Ground floor commercial requirements can limit housing feasibility. It can increase costs and reduce project feasibility. So oftentimes requiring ground floor commercial means that you need to use podium construction, which is more expensive than wood frame residential construction. And we took a look here on this chart. In the red is retail lease rates in Springfield over roughly 20 years. So you can see they are, you know, peaked. There's been some some variation in the lease rates, but overall, they they there really hasn't been much variation. That red kind of stays between, you know, 10 and at highest, a little over $14 a square foot for lease rates. And vacancy fluctuates quite a bit. So the interpretation of this is, you know, lease rates aren't getting, you know, the market is not so strong. The residential market is not so strong. There's quite a bit of vacancy kind of persistently with some variations over certain years, over the past 20 years. And so what that means to us as a finding is that retail vacancy remains high, meaning that being overly prescriptive about commercial requirements in some cases in some areas may be unrealistic in terms of the market and also means that there's a barrier for housing development. Next slide. And I'm going to turn it back to Haley to talk through the project schedule. But I just want to say we'll be on hand after the schedule to answer any other questions that came up.
Thank you, Rachel and Jamin. So on your screen, the project timeline, you can see where we're at. That's the gray dot down the end of May, this is the end of May. So we're hoping to finalize this code audit based off feedback that we received tonight from council. Then we'll move on to the code and plan concepts. This is actually where we're going to be reaching out to the community. You can see our first round of community engagement from July to August. We're going to be asking probably some questions, some surveys, handing out fact pages, creating posters and flyers and handouts, really getting the word out about what this project is about and asking for feedback. Last week, I actually got approval from the planning commission for a technical advisory committee. It's one of the largest we've ever seen. Seventeen members were appointed to that technical advisory committee and they'll be advising me on what, how they want to move forward, some recommendations of policy changes for this project. I'll be meeting with them monthly till the end of the year, so about six times throughout the throughout the rest of this project. And then we'll be coming back to you with what we learned from those code and plan concepts this fall for the amendments phase. Again, that will be more of the actual drafting of the code and refinement plan amendments, things like that. There'll be a second round of community engagement from October to November. And then we're hoping by the end of this year, we'll have an adoption ready package that we will then take forward next year. So again, that's the end of the presentation, but I do have some questions to help with the discussion if necessary.
Counselor Rodley. Uh Council Rodney.
I have some questions of my own first. Thank you very much. Um I really appreciate this and I appreciate the really kind of digging in deeply to what barriers mean. I think of the time that I've been on how we have thought of barriers and how do we remove barriers um has been kind of surface level. I think like a lot of municipalities, right? We're like what are our codes and what are, how do we make things easier? So I I really appreciate this and particularly have just been like sitting with the the challenges of the mixed use. You know, because I think a lot of us think of mixed use as the most possibilities, right? It's the opportunity to do the most we possibly can in there and to create the the kind of walkable vibrant communities that we are all seeing that we need. And I really appreciated the data about the challenges of building those and what that looks like in terms of the the market. One of the things, and I don't know where to go with this, but one of the things I've I've been thinking about since reading it and then listening to it again is, you know, we
In the chamber, you're you went on mute, so we are not hearing. You're back, yes.
Oops. Whoever is digging into this, um to think about, you know, what really is the business future of Springfield? We tend to have more industry industry and more medical and things like that, which may or may not be compatible with housing. So um I think there's this opportunity to really think about what where where do we fit in business and is there a way to get to um removing those barriers so that maybe we do have those blocks of housing that don't necessarily have retail? But maybe they have other things, maybe they have childcare, maybe they have other things that are going to add to the mixed use and the vibrancy of the neighborhood without burdening the building. So really no question, just pontificating.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Blackwell.
Excuse me, is there anything in the the C F A mandates that stated the mixed use commercial has to remain? I mean, because isn't part of the idea of that to have the walkable, you know, live and walk same area? And and if that was removed, wouldn't that kind of be contradictory to the whole idea of that?
I'm gonna have um Cascadia jump in about this one. Question was about the ground floor requirement received that.
Mm hmm. Um uh no, there's nothing in the um climate friendly areas requirements uh under C F A that uh would conflict with um allowing for a, you know, standalone uh residential development that doesn't include any commercial uses. Um the uh C F A requirements will um require the city to allow both residential and commercial uses in in CFAs. Um they do allow for cities to require ground floor commercial uh if they so choose. Um and so I think it's it's broadly consistent with the way that you your mixed use zones uh require um ground floor commercial uses as part of a mixed use development um in some of those mixed use zones, not all of them. Um and so there's nothing that really conflicts with that. I would say one of the things that's different about the way that the 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 climate friendly areas conceive of mixed use is more on a district scale in that there will be in residential development as well as commercial development all within that same district. And the the way that conflicts with, in some cases, uh the um mixed use districts you have in Springfield is that many of those think of that mixed use development should happen on a site scale, that on every site, there should be a mix of uses. Uh and that's sort of the intent of of some of the um mixed use districts. So that's maybe a way to sort of understand the difference there.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, or what questions th- that do you have that we should be answering?
Uh one and two, I just wanted to make sure that the council was clear uh about what were the required actions versus what were the strategic recommendations? So required was the state mandated stuff um and clear and objective, and then the strategic was these barriers that we talked about.
Correct. Do we need to provide you feedback on the strategic portions? Or are we going to see them when they actually get written and sort of vetted out a little bit?
We'll see them with the concepts. I don't really have clear right now, but I think the ground floor commercial was a great example of that. That's a policy decision that we um could discuss and work through as part of a strategic recommendation, right? Jamin said that's not a requirement in the C F A standards, but it is something that we have the discretion to choose whether we want to continue that policy or not.
And that's been consistent feedback from the development community for for a very long time. Um I would be interested in seeing options, right? Maybe maybe that's going to help us zoom out and think about it in a more district wide scale versus site to site so that we can still have some of those commercial amenities available in that area, but maybe not on every every specific site. Go ahead, Council Rodney.
Thank you. Um and I do, this is this really is more of a question. Around the clear and objective standards, I I I think that was really interesting feedback, right? And as I think about what the process might look like in the next six months or so in terms of like getting clearer and more on that, I also I had this sort of shared concern that it gets more restricted. Like some of the examples in there, excuse me, were like, you know, you say a plum tree as opposed to and I would hate it if we're like, you have to have three to five trees. And uh from here to here, I mean, that feels like it's getting back to some of those restrictions we had before as opposed to opening it up as much as possible. And I absolutely understand that it could be a barrier if it seems really wiggly. So that's just a thing, however we proceed, whether it's with your chat, whether it's your technical advisory committee or the government, whatever, to just weigh those to like, how do we really keep it as flexible as possible, but also give?
Yeah, if I could just comment on that, I think you just hit you hit on a really important tension and related to complying with those clear and objective standards is that there could be an unintended consequence is that the code becomes more prescriptive than it is today and doesn't allow that flexibility. Um so it's something we've dealt with um and many other uh projects and um the the lens we tried to bring to it is um how can we make this regulation more clear and objective? While not losing out on the ability for flexibility, right? And there's actually a way to thread that needle um with many kinds of standards where may maybe have, for example, a menu of options, right? And you must do at least three of these things, and each of those things is clearly and objectively defined. Um but you have options for three different things you can do. Right? And so there there's ways to thread that needle, but I think it's it's a really important um tension point and something that um we may uh come back to um in the later later phase of this project to make sure uh we got that right, of that balance of creating certainty in the code with clear and objective standards while not reverting to something that's um too narrow and prescriptive.
Again, thanks for that comment. And as a community, I would tell you that we are not looking for a more prescriptive code and that we we value flexibility fairly highly to allow developers to figure out how to make things pencil. And I think the co- the other comment that I would make, and then we can talk about the governance committee, is that as we're cleaning this up, I'm looking for like the decision points that make it easier to develop in Springfield, right? Like this commercial on the ground floor is an easier piece, but when we we start start talking about specifically about although we're adjusting the language and we're updating, you know, all the things, right? Like at the end of the day, we're looking to find more housing in the city of Springfield, and that's what I'm looking for from the from from the lens of this conversation. And I think it's really important that as we make these updates that you know, modernizing simplicity, also usability, right, would be would be is really helpful here, right? Because as we add things to the code, we don't want it more legal but harder to use. Does anybody else have any comments? Um we did talk about having a governance committee to do a couple of summer check-ins. I have not talked to Council Blackwell and Councilor Doyle about doing that over the summer, but I would really um appreciate you taking an extra uh virtual meeting, and I'm not going to put you on the spot. I will take your answer off the air. Um but like, it would be really helpful is with how important this uh is for from a development perspective to just allow a couple more check-ins with Haley over the summer. What other questions do we have?
Um I guess just the last question, any suggestions or feedbacks for the code and plan concept space? That's the next phase. So again, that includes a round of engagement. So we just kind of talked about the governance committee, but if you guys had any suggestions, I did mention the technical advisory committee is is a rather large group.
I would be really interested to see the roster uh like that. I I think that, you know, that would be that would be helpful. Councilor Stowe.
Something that I think often gets overlooked when we're doing any of these developments is what's the role of pedestrians and what's the role of bikes? I know we say that and we some, but sometimes I'm concerned that we pay lip service to that. So all I'm asking is just in in whatever way possible, please make sure you're always having the question of how is this building? How is this developed, making things just a little bit more walkable in Springfield? Thanks, that's.
Council Rodney.
Thank you. Um and I would second that. I appreciate that. Anything that's going to make it more accessible, biking, walking, people using mobility devices, any of that stuff. Um I think and the the because I got so excited about that, I started to forget what I was going to say. Oh, it was around the engagement piece. I think um I know it showed, if I go back to that timeline, it kind of has engagement coming right up. And my suggestion, and it's just a suggestion and opinion, is to take a little time to get the language as clear as possible um before going out there, because sometimes it can be like, depending on the questions we ask and the things we tell, things can get all spun up. And so it's just like getting really clear about what it is we want to share with folks and doing it in a really plain language way that's going to be really accessible. And making sure that we get a good mix, right? That we want to get ordinary folks that are living, people who maybe are small business owners and developers and just like not just lean on one groups is my suggestions for that.
Okay. I think that's all the feedback that we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh I'm going to adjourn us um for the work session, and then we are going to reconvene as soon as everybody can exit for the executive session.